All set.
Okay. So, happy Wednesday, everyone, and thank you for being here. Today, we're gonna get an update on our workforce, major workforce development effort. And we're joined by Commissioner Myman Torres, who I believe is gonna lead us off for that.
Yes, thank you very much, President Scott. I will, I'll start by introducing members of the Board of Directors who are here for the, the organization Rochester Market Driven Community Corporation, which will be going by City Sustainability Institute. So there are members of the board who are here. I will then do the, the, the presentation and bring them in at certain points as I, as I can, and then certainly open it up for, for council questions. So joining me today, I'd like to introduce Amber Powers, if you want to just wave Amber, who is a member of the Board of Directors. We also have Dr. Lomax Campbell, who is a member of the Board of Directors and is here in the capacity as a member of the Board of Directors, has served on the board for quite some time, even prior to this transition to City Sustainability Institute. We also have Kiara Warren, who is serving on the board. And council member Jose Pio has been elected to the board as well and is, is, is a board member that has joined us. So with that, I will share some slides here. We do have some visuals for you today. And I have provided these to council staff for your ability to reference later and to share with additional council members who may not be in attendance today. So I wanna take the opportunity, as the department head, that is, really being seen as the sponsor and the grantor, as the city is the funder of such project, to, to talk about where this came from and how this came about, spend a little time on, on that piece. So I wanted to point out here on this slide that the 2034 Plan has a very active urban agriculture section. And in that section, you know, our Dries Department was heavily involved in the development of the plan, as were all of, of you and stakeholders in the community. And one of the components of this plan really is, is where we got the concept of looking at what City Sustainability Institute can be for a workforce development project. So as you can see here, one of the strategies in the, the plan is around workforce development specifically and opportunities for employment as it relates to urban agriculture. So this is, this is all a part of what we have been working through with, whether it be with Rock City Homegrown and a number of other initiatives that have aligned with the 2034 Plan. So I wanna, just wanted to start with, that's where the impetus for this came from. In addition to why it was included as a, as an ARPA-funded project is the worst community input that was collected in a variety of ways to, to get resident and citizen input to the, how the ARPA dollars would be directed. And what you see here is an excerpt from the Community Input Report, which is online on the city's website. And it was specifically looking at what, how did residents feel about having the, the dollars invested? And were, were there some important things to, to do in regards to supporting businesses and industries and individuals impacted by COVID? And as you can see here, job training programs for both youth and adults ranked right at the top, as well as being able to find financial investments for grocery stores to locate in underserved neighborhoods or food deserts. So this was very much on the top of minds of residents as they gave their input. Additionally, to that, there were some verbatims. And there's a few verbatims on, that I've just added to this slide that referenced this, you know, looking at vocational training, that it would include a stipend if necessary to open career paths. And, and as we talk about City Sustainability Institute, that's one of the key tenants, is being able to pay and provide some, some stipends for participants. Also, looking at entrepreneurial training, that's specific to opening food business, as well as green initiatives and related job training. So this was input from city residents that they wanted to make sure we had some direction here as we were moving forward. I know that both the mayor and city council president Scott have both mentioned the Cleveland model. And I just wanted to, to clarify a little bit on that because, you know, the Rochester Market Driven Community Corporation, which was incorporated in 2016 as a nonprofit, really came from the concept and the overview of, of what was seen and what has happened in other places. And the Cleveland model, which has actually been rolled out since 2012, was this model where, that you see here, where a municipal body, the municipal government, in that case, the city, partnered with a nonprofit corporation, partnered with anchor institutions in the community to create cooperatives and employ own businesses that could support not only the economy locally, but on the macro level, but on the individual level as well. And they have many, many successes that have come from that, as did, you know, when it, when we had Own Rochester, as did that in many regards, with having some of the anchor institutions involved in providing business and patronage to that cooperative. They also have, as was one of their cooperatives, the Green City Growers, which is very similar to the, the concept that we are talking about with this workforce development project of, of City Sustainability Institute. I also wanted to point out the Urban Growers Collective, which is in Chicago. And different from the Cleveland model, which was a, a large scale, you know, citywide effort, the Urban Growers Collective is a, a nonprofit organization that was founded in some of, that was some of the same tenants, around the idea that urban agriculture, food systems are a part of our economic development core and that individuals in the urban environment, black and brown individuals, who are often excluded from new industries and workforce development, could use this as an opportunity to gain job skills, career paths, and, and really, in some cases, change their lives based on some of the individuals that they targeted and vulnerable populations that they targeted to bring into their nonprofit. So Urban Growers Collective is another example. Certainly, there are many other examples in the country of cities who have been, have really embraced urban agriculture per se. But I wanted to point out two models that really focused on workforce development, job training, job, job development, that we have looked at for this particular project. So City Sustainability Institute has an overview. Again, the Rochester Market Driven Community Corporation, which is a nonprofit 501(c)(3), of which there are board members on this, this call today, was incorporated for the, the sole purpose of creating and retaining job opportunities for Rochester city residents. And so when it came to a point where this project was able to be, you know, really further moved along from an economic development standpoint, it made sense that the organization that was formed solely for this, again, based out of the idea of the Cleveland model, be, be re-engaged for this purpose. So the City Sustainability Institute will be about providing city residents with vocational and occupational training, entrepreneurial training, cooperative enterprise operations, and importantly, wraparound services for participants, which is also something that we have learned throughout our many times and many iterations of, of workforce development opportunities, is that there are some other things we need to do to make sure that people are successful in, in those pursuits. And this program will, will attend to that. So just a little bit of data. I, I know that everybody kinda has a, a gist of what happens in our community. But just knowing that there were some specific populations that, you know, the program wants to target based on what we learned from the Urban Growers Collective. Although City Sustainability Institute will be open to all city residents, there are certain populations that, that, you know, we really wanna have direct referrals and direct access to. And individuals returning from incarceration is, is one such population. And, you know, there are a number of people who return to our community from incarceration each year. I have some data here from RIT Center for Public Safety Initiatives, looking at how many people do return to Monroe County, and that almost all of, of those individuals do return to the city of Rochester, as well as the, the individuals who come from, from local, you know, assignments of jail. And, and there will also be more of that, as we have seen recently with, you know, the, the closing of, of facilities and the real, the real desire to reintroduce people to the community. And this program will be one of the ways that can support them. In addition, just in general, COVID had impacts, but certainly the residents responded in their input that, looking at unemployment as a whole, and how does that impact people of color in the city versus the, the county as a whole versus surrounding counties? And we know, just anecdotally, but also now, you know, looking at that data, that city residents are disproportionately affected by unemployment in, in every category. So this is an opportunity to, to impact that as well. And then lastly, we talk a lot about New Americans and their role in urban agriculture and also in, in, you know, our community and in diversifying our community in such tremendous ways. And obviously, our population has changed in that regard, given the, the positioning that our prior presidential administration had on, on bringing New Americas to, to our country. And it is everyone's hope that we return to some of those, those prior levels where our city became home to a number of, of new residents and, and we continue to, to welcome them. Rock City Homegrown, which I, I will ask, you know, Dr. Campbell to talk about a little bit later on, is, is a part of this. So I wanted to make sure that I put this, you know, data back in front of you about food insecurity in, in our city. And I think that that is something, again, you are all very familiar with and, and support needing to address in a variety of ways. So very specifically about City Sustainability Institute, there will be four units of service for, you know, units that operate within the, the institute, the academy, the Evergrow Industries, the Launchpad and the Support Station. And I'll tell you a little bit more about each one of those. So the intention of the academy is to really support learning in a variety of ways, depending on where the individual is and what their goals are. There are some people who, you know, will focus on job readiness skills, work readiness skills, including financial stewardship, you know. But there are others who will be able to work on skilled trades that may be associated with urban agriculture in general. So things like HVAC and electrical plumbing, those are all skilled trades that are also heavily associated with agriculture and can be pathways for individuals who are enrolled or who seek services from City Sustainability Institute. And then also, there are some family and community development, you know, learnings and courses that, that will really just round out, you know, how to help people transform what they, what they gain from this and gain in their new, new careers or work abilities and transform that into their, their families and their community. Evergrow Industries will be an arm that's very similar to what is operated both in the Cleveland model and in the Urban Growers Collective, which is an urban agricultural co-op, where what is grown is able to be sold, both, you know, onsite in a marketplace, but, but largely in, you know, contracted sales and, you know, connections that are made, in particular with institutions that can hire, but also some that may not even be in our community yet. I think we also have to understand that there's a part of the agricultural, you know, community and growing community that will be coming to Rochester, to our state. And there may, may be opportunities for our residents to gain entry to that workforce by gaining the skills they need to be in that, that workforce, either for themselves or to work for existing organizations. The Launchpad, it's always critical to, to provide, you know, entrepreneurial opportunities, training, services, grants as we can, especially as people gain skills and may want to work for themselves. They may want to grow for themselves, but they also may want to enter into either food-related or agriculture-related businesses in the city. And we want to be able to, you know, support that learning, do what we can to rally the community around and leverage private dollars to support that, as well as access to other types of funding that might be available through Redco or through MBD or, or other mechanisms to help people start their, start their businesses once they've gained an affinity and a connection to this work. And last but certainly not least is what we've learned in, in many iterations in the community around how to be successful with, you know, any kind of transformation for people is making sure that, you know, the whole person is attended to, the whole family is attended to, and making sure that there are people with, you know, lived experience that are around them, supporting. That is one of the key tenants that has, has supported the success of a program like ReJob that we talk about very often, that, you know, part of that key, key to that is Paul, is Paul McFadden knocking on doors and helping people be successful and navigate getting to where they need to be and solving problems that that program doesn't have funding to support, such as housing and, and meeting some of those basic needs. But his role is critical in that success, and, and we certainly have learned from that. So there's a lot here on this slide, but I wanted to make it clear that this, this project was something that, you know, the board and the team worked on putting together a logic model for, because, you know, they are a sub-recipient to, to a grant that the city is receiving. And as such, there's, there's an application process. And that, you know, there's a process where inputs and outcomes are expected to be, you know, developed and understood. And there are inputs and there are activities, and there certainly are both short and long-term outcomes expected to be associated with this project. Of course, there's the increase in skills and, and immediate increase of meeting basic needs for individuals in our community and their families. But we also wanna see, you know, can this, this really reach long-term objectives of creating more vibrant and prosperous neighborhoods? And in, and in particular, increasing that personal wealth and family net worth for city residents, which is, which is all the impetus of our Office of Community Wealth Building, that Dr. Campbell was so critical in, in, in building and growing through our empowerment centers. Partnerships, want to touch on partnerships. The city of Rochester, we're obviously the, the funder, you know, a startup funder, you know, really being the catalytic, you know, being able to use these dollars to kickstart this project. But Monroe Community College is a, is a partner, not only for the academy, but also for, you know, connections to other grants and, and other opportunities to bring in workforce development dollars to the project. So all of these partnerships are both partnerships in, in multiple ways. For the Department of Criminal Justice, certainly they have funding, but also they have access to individuals that can be referred for service and connected for service in, in a meaningful way. Rochester Works, part of the funding structure does include some access to IOA funds, which are Workforce Investment Act dollars, that the participants will be eligible for. Many, many people are eligible for these funds. Working in partnership with them on, on leveraging those dollars, any work readiness training that they can either provide or fund, as well as referrals and connections to employers. So there's a, there's a, a natural connection there. And Dries has been working very closely with Rochester Works as their youth component and full staffing have moved into what is now called the, the Loretta C. Scott Center for Human Services building. We also have Monroe County as a whole, in terms of all of the, the aspects that they have with criminal justice, the social services component, and making sure that all of the health and human services are connected. I meet with Commissioner Thalia Wright on a regular basis so that the health and human services aspects that we have are, are connected together. There, there is a budget for this. The organization has put together a plan, a plan that not only sustains how it's gonna use the initial startup funding, but also how it will, over time, add additional grants and, and foundation dollars, increase its fundraising, because as a nonprofit, it has the capability to solicit dollars. And then, and certainly fundraising will be a major component of what it does, as well as making sure that there are funds for participant stipends, for co-op accruals, as well as being able to, with some funds coming in from private sources, be able to provide some grants to, from the Launchpad for individuals starting up their businesses. So there, there's a plan, this is, this is a budget plan that the organization did submit with its application to the city to be a sub-recipient, has been reviewed by our ARPA consultants as, for compliance and alignment, and, you know, has, has passed that litmus test. Now, as a separate organization, they do have to manage that budget. And the board members who are here, you know, understand their fiduciary responsibility to that and also to the grant agreement. So there has been thought put into how this would work and how this would ramp up and how it fits into the guidelines. In terms of location, when presented to council, there was originally a desire to talk about the negotiations around the Tops location on Lake Avenue. That was indeed a negotiation process. But subsequent to our presentation, just, you know, the, the day of or the, the final council meeting on that, we were informed that some developer had made an offer on the, the Tops on Lake Avenue. That developer has not been yet disclosed as to who, who that is or what that purpose will be. However, that is, is what happened. Now, always was, there was a, a risk that either the site wouldn't work for one reason or another, or those negotiations wouldn't be successful. So the board has been working on alternative, alternative locations, understanding that there's some specific criteria that we were trying to meet with the location. One of those is accessibility. Obviously, we wanted to have a neighborhood-based location that could be easily accessible to all city residents, but also has a level of familiarity. That's not a place that's far away or far removed from other, other locations and, you know, that people feel comfortable being at. And then lastly, that there's some neighborhood amenities around the site. And that was, those were all some attractive things about the site that the Lake Ave Tops had to offer. However, you know, the board, who is here, is, is negotiating a lease for space at this point, not a, not a purchase, but a lease for space in the northwest quadrant of the city. And that will include space for training, classroom and office space, as well as a large growing space, it's two zero zero, there's 24,000 square feet of growing space, lab, indoor space, as well as some roof-growing space and, and green space for additional, you know, laboratory and growing outside of that. Just so there's an overview of understanding of how this, this, the staffing and, and the organization is going, the expectation that the board has is that when they bring on their executive director, which you'll see in the plan, they, they're working on that process now, that that executive director will flush out the, the specifics about the, the roles and responsibilities in the rest of the organization. However, there is going to be staffing that is around the support station that will include, include some of those peer navigators. The academy will be, you know, a number of instructors, including partnerships with Rochester Works and Monroe Community College, Evergrow Industries, the Launchpad Administration. And then you see, very importantly, the cohort participants, because that is another linchpin of this program, is that there will be compensation that participants will be able to receive as a, as, as a part of this. And then lastly, before I, I let, you know, Dr. Campbell talk a little bit about Rock City Homegrown and any other initiatives that the board sees coming up under City Sustainability Institute, is just a, a clarif, you know, clarity on the launch plan and, and the importance of being able to get started with providing training and providing classroom training and starting to get going with what can happen. The, the facility that the board is looking at now is, is ready to go for training. So as soon as they commence that, they'll be able to begin. There's already been some level of fast-track training that has already started under this auspice and will continue to. And that's a, you know, an entrepreneurial-based training that this organization will continue to facilitate for city residents. So some of those things are already happening in other spaces and will be able to begin right away there. So with all of that said, Dr. Campbell, I will let you say a few things before taking questions, because I know you were both a member of the board prior, the board now, and also, you know, had a lot to do with what programs needed to be a part of this particular effort.
Sure, and thank you, Danielle. Great job walking through the overview of CSI. And greetings, everybody. Thank you for formally allowing you all to, to, to join you all for this meeting. About a year ago, Living Cities was one of the founder, funders that was working with OCWB, had invited the, the, the city to participate in a 10-year cohort program called Closing the Gaps Network. And I wanna say their goal was to get up to 30 cities across the country participating in collaborative efforts to close gaps in their community. And being that, at the time, I was still director of the, the mayor's office of Community Wealth Building, one of the, the issues that we had not been able to really tackle with any real strategies or resources was this notion of poverty through food insecurity and creating pathways to entrepreneurship in the space to address both food deserts and food insecurity. And so being that that was a 10-year initiative with Living Cities, we had formed a project team back in September of 2020 and started meeting on a tri-weekly basis. So every three meet, three weeks, we met. Actually, at the time, Dr. D.T. Gilvey was a part of it. Councilman Gruber was a part of it. Councilman Melendez was a part of it, and several other city staff and some community partners. And we were trying to codify what would be the scope of this program, being that we had 10 years to do it. At the time, they gave us a grant of $75,000 for year one. And what shook out of that was this notion of, kind of like a hub-and-spoke model, where in the center of the program was foundational education and training and asset building around urban agriculture, cooperative economics and urban entrepreneurship. And then coming off of that core program was a series of strategies. I wanna say it was about four or five that functioned like spokes. So one idea was making publicly available land and other, any other future city-owned properties available for either lease or, or purchase for residents looking to grow either indoors or outdoors, building that skill set. They talked about the possibility of allowing families to combine what they produce and sell it to local businesses. And currently, that's not permitted, but we knew that the Food Policy Council was coming online, and that was a potential policy opportunity for the Food Policy Council to tackle. So for example, if you had 75 families using our community gardens or the City Sustainability Institute to learn how to grow food, let's say 75 of them decided to grow mustard greens or collard greens or tomatoes, they consume what they need for their household, but the rest, their excess, being permissible to bundle those together and sell them to local restaurants. So you have urban farm-to-restaurant-to-table operations, as an example of one of the strategies. Or when they really get good at it, leveraging La Marqueta or the public market as a venue for sale. Ultimately, some residents may wanna use their homes to grow for themselves, whether those are container-based growing or hydroponic growing. whether those are container-based growing or hydroponic growing. That, I'm not sure had been previously attempted to scale, but that was one of the ideas that we had. And so being that we had 10 years and that, that first year came with funding, each year would provide its own round of funding. We were required to do undoing racism training. We were connected to Policy Link and Gare. And so those national networks, as well as research support, is available to us through Rock City Homegrown's participation in the Closing the Gaps Network. So I think synergistically, it makes sense to be moved under CSI. And I think with the leadership that Danielle is seeing to put in place with the staffing, it will be sustainable.
Thank you, President Scott.
I'm sorry, somebody asked me something?
No, I was just saying, thank you. That was our, our presentation.
Are there questions, comments?
I had a question.
I have some. Go ahead, Mary.
With the cooperative model, I know that Own Rochester in its previous form had struggled a bit, and I was wondering if you could go into a little bit more detail about how you plan to develop, you know, a true cooperative with, you know, workers being part of not just the ownership but the decision-making?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can tell you what I know about Own Rochester and, you know, I know that a, a lot of the struggle had to do with COVID and the impact on the particular industries that had been selected. And at that time, largely the janitorial service was not able to, to, to sustain and continue during that. So I know that that was a, a big issue there. I think there have been some great learnings from the Cleveland model, though, that can carry forward into what City Sustainability Institute does in terms of how to structure and format cooperative accruals for people who are participants and, and working in the business. So I think that there, there are some models that have been shared that where they have found success and we can learn from them because they didn't initially have success back in 2012 when they started, but they have generated that and, and, and our goal is, is to learn from, you know, what they, they learned to do better and start off where they, where they left off. So we do have some models on accruals and, 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 and how that could be structured that we can put in place and, and hopefully monitor for our residents.
And I will add that there are models from other countries that have worked very well that we can also benchmark and learn from.
That's great. Yeah, I, I just, um, just to say, I, I really am impressed by all of the work put into this and it's a, it seems to be really holistic and kind of checking all the boxes of what someone might need to be successful. So I appreciate that.
You, Councilmember Gruber.
Thank you. When the Cleveland folks came to Rochester, I, I don't remember what year that was, but probably, I don't know, well, well before I was first elected, so it was probably 2014 or 2015. I remember they came to meet with us in my role at Food Link. And one of the things that we talked about quite a bit was the different models that they were running and they, they were really high in the laundry cooperative, which seemed to have been profitable. And they were very clear that the, the produce that they were growing in particular. I believe they're growing lettuce for, for Case Western University. They made it clear that they were, they were really subsidizing that considerably, which I think makes a lot of sense because lettuce and leafy greens are one of the most difficult things to grow in a profitable manner, which is, and, and in, in my day job at Food Link, we operate the curbside market, which is the biggest kind of retail outlet for fresh produce in the city of Rochester. And that is also subsidized considerably. So I'm wondering, who pays for the ongoing subsidy for these things? Or do you think there's, there's different models that show that these connect, this can actually be profitable somehow?
I, I think what we've seen from, from Cleveland, as you, you said, is, is that was what I was alluding to, is they, they did share that their model around the urban growers was very, very slow and just, just in the last few years because of their choice of produce, has just started to, to make those accruals happen for their co-op members. But prior to that, they were subsidizing it and had, had trouble with that. But the laundry was, was doing well and, and some of their others, they have a janitorial as well. I think that the, the, the key will be looking at what is produced. And the, the goal is for there to be some offset. But I do believe that, you know, the, the function around workforce development, there will always be a portion of the program that has to be covered in other ways because it's a training-based program. So the idea is that there will be a mix of, a mix of funding that will include some sales, but certainly not exclusively because it is, it's a program.
Got it. I think that leads me to my, to my second question, which is related to technology and space. I've been, I've had the opportunity now for, I've been in the, in, in this field for about 13 years and I've seen so many different technologies come and go related to indoor farming, related to vertical agriculture. In fact, I, I recall actually having a, a meeting with, with Deputy Mayor Len Reedon way back in the day about the city's interest in doing this, you know, probably close to six, seven years ago. And one of the real holdups is that these different technologies are incredibly expensive. These different technologies take up a lot of space in different ways. They require a lot of backend work, you know, depending on what kind of infrastructure it is, if it's hydroponic, et cetera. And so I, I guess that, I, that leads me to, to ask the question of how this group is going to make some decisions about what of the many different types of technology to invest in? And how they're going to come to pick a location prior to having that technology identified? Because I, I presume the technology itself, whatever the growing mechanism is, is going to ultimately impact the, the success of, of, of a property.
Absolutely. I think, I want to just share that the, the, the organization, the team, the project has gotten a referral to work with AgriTector. AgriTector, if I can say that right. It is, because this is a growing concept and you're right. Like all technology, when it starts out, things are, are more expensive. I think that there have been many, many moves forward in, and that the, there will be decisions that have to be made about what type of technology to, to start with and how to, to do that and phase that in. But it's not being done without expert consultation and design. So that is coinciding with what has to be done to the space. The, the space that, you know, you know, starting with a, a pretty open space with some basic expectations around HVAC and other components. With those things in mind, this firm, which we were referred to by firms that the city already works with, specializes in this and will be working to help the, the program select the right things that they can do, afford and, you know, phase over time, because it won't all start out the first, you know, the first iteration with everything in place.
So, so AgriTector is, is already kind of under contract to be the, the consultant on, on setting up the space?
They're not under contract, but they have, they are consulting. And, and my guess is, I can't speak for the board of the organization, but my, my hope is that they do contract with them.
Got it. Sorry, President Scott, just one, one or two more questions, if you don't mind. So I, I would imagine that a major part of this, of the success of a program like this is going to be its ability to connect into the cannabis industry. You know, it's not every day that we get an opportunity to talk about a, a brand-new industry that is agricultural-based, that's going to be a billion dollars pretty much overnight. But that again, is one of the things that I, one of the reasons why I was potentially calling to, well, why I was asking to pause on this, because I think there's still so much that's unknown about how some of the licensing will be, will be delegated by the state and how this program will be able to ensure that it is able to, to be part of the cannabis industry. So is, is that part of the, some of those numbers and projections that you talked about? Is the, is that including some connection to cannabis or, or is that just kind of a later concept?
It is a later concept. That's not included because the work on this project preceded cannabis being legalized in the state. But I would say that having the workforce ready is important now, even if we don't know all of the rules, because the purpose of this project is workforce development, not necessarily the production of, of cannabis, but only for the, the aspect of, of teaching, training and preparing people to be a part of the industry. And so in that regard, we can begin that portion because, you know, I think people know how to grow it. But so we need to make sure that we're, we're showing people how to do that, you know, in a way that's, you know, mass production and, and all of the skills that related to that. But to your question, the, the projections for that are not included and would be something that, you know, certainly is hopeful that the organization will be able to benefit from the, the social investment that firms come into, to, to the city have to, to make. Not only do they have to make it in workforce development, but they have to make it, you know, to the, to the community. And, you know, we're certainly hopeful that having this program in place will give us something to offer these companies come into Rochester to be able to invest in.
Got it. La, la, lastly for me, at least for the time being, is the, the projection has 1,500 participants per year? So is that, is that an understanding that there's going to be 1,500? Like, is that, is that to say there's going to be like a, is this going to be a certificate program that 1,500 people are going to come in and out and be kind of certified, even if it's our, our own kind of internal certification? I, I guess I'm just trying to understand, what does 1,500 participants mean? What's the depth of the touch points there?
Well, there's a variety of them. So some people will go in different directions in the academy, whether that be through the job readiness, through the whole process. So not everyone will go through everything that we have, but there will be some certificates, depending on the, the track or program that they enroll in. But the, the 1,500 is the expectation of, of all the touch points, of all of the, the trainings and opportunities that will be available through the program. Some will be more in-depth than others and some will result in certificates.
I'm good.
President Scott, can I ask a question?
Thank you. Well, I kind of had my hand up.
All right, I'm, I'm, I'm unmuted. I got to get my cup. Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. So just a comment more than a question. Um, I believe that when the board chooses to act and work on offering some manner of training or form for folks in the cannabis industry, I don't think they'll have any problem finding partners, especially if they're locating in the northwest. There is actually a large indoor cannabis grow literally around the corner from the location where they're looking to place this site. So I don't think they're going to have any problem finding, trying, finding partners to work with them to build a workforce for that industry. And I think they're uniquely suited, given their location to do that work.
Thank you, Council.
I think I have my hand up, President Scott.
Go ahead, Dr. Ove.
Thank you. A couple of things. Cannabis, the cannabis industry doesn't involve just growing. And so one of the things with workforce development is training people for all of the aspects of bringing cannabis from growing to people's homes. And so training people how to process it, how to measure it. It is a variety of occupations that are well-paying and, and that would be great for Rochester residents. The other thing about this program, which I think is important to know, is that when we talk about workforce development, we're not, not just talking about employees. We're talking about training people, helping people to become entrepreneurs, which will have a tremendous impact and actually is in line with the new mayor's goal of 1,000 new businesses. And so helping people to create these new businesses and to be successful in doing so is an important part of what CSI will be doing.
Thank you. Councilmember P, I think you, was that you I heard? No?
That was me.
Come in. Okay, Councilmember Evans.
Yeah. So one of my questions is, is, and it may have been on the budget slide, what other funds have been committed to this project other than city money?
At this point, the plan includes fundraising that will happen as well as some other, some WEOWA funds, which participants are eligible for, that are funds that exist, that are federal funds that already exist. There are also a number of grants, federal, federal grants, as well as foundation grants that the board will be pursuing. So the, the funding that is there for the first year is largely the ARPA grant. But there is a, a plan throughout the entire budget that they submitted as a part of the grant application that shows a diversification and a mix for additional funds from a number of sources, both private, public and donations.
And of the individuals that are on this board, how many of them have experience in workforce development? I know Mr. Campbell does from his time at Monroe Community College, but are there others on the board that have specifically experiences in, in, in workforce development?
I do in terms of entrepreneurship. In fact, I got a grant from the federal government for creating entrepreneurs as part of a workforce development grant program.
And you're, you're on the board, Dr., Dr. DT?
Yes, I just was recently added.
In, in, in addition to answer your question, Councilmember Evans, in addition to Doctors Campbell and DT, who've, who've, you know about having their experience, Sarah Fletcher is also on the board and recently, most recently worked for CEO, which is an organization that focuses solely on workforce development for the recently released individuals.
Well, and, and I, and I think the, the, the challenge, and I mean, I'm going to go into this now, is the number of city employees that might be on this board, that, that, that might need to be something that might need to be revisited, particularly if they're going to be getting large amount, large amounts of funding from the, from, from the city. But that's not something we have to address now, but that is a, a concern I have. Actually, you, you know, I, I can tell you that a lot of the boards that I'm on, I'm probably on six or seven boards, come January 1st, I'm not going to be on any of those boards because some of those boards will be coming to the city for, for funding. So that's, that's a, a, a conversation I think that will need to be addressed. Is there a plan to, to diversify this board with more members of, of, of people who are not on, on, on the city? I know I just heard that Councilmember P is going to be a member of this board as well. So what's the, the, the number of individuals that are currently on the board? And how many of them currently have some type of, of affiliation with the city of Rochester?
Kiara, you can correct me about the, the number of individuals on the board, but at this point, there are only two city employees on the board. Sarah Fletcher and Kiara Warren are the only city employees who are on the board. Dr. Campbell is no longer a city employee. There are also Amber Powers, who is here, is on the board. She is not a city employee, as well as Dr. Jones from Monroe County, who's representing the sheriff's office, which is a, a key partner in this project, is on the board and not a city employee. And they're, they do have plans for further diversification. Carl Teigen, who is the board chair, works for the University of Rochester and is not a city employee. So there are a number.
Nor am I. I'm not a city employee.
And you're not a city employee. But the, the, the idea is for them to diversify with partners and the applicable people who can support the project long-term. And we do have, you know, other boards where there are some city representatives, in particular, given the connectivity to the services, to the work, you know, Redco would be an example of that. So I think that, you know, there is a plan that the board has and has been working on to diversify its membership with, with the appropriate people who can support the mission, the vision, and, you know, also the philanthropy that's going to be required.
What do we anticipate the ongoing operating cost to be each year for this operation? Was that on that slide? I couldn't tell.
It is, and you will receive a copy of that as well.
And what was that, what was that number? Do you remember if you have it in front of you? If not, I can look on.
The, the, it is about 4.6 million.
A, a year?
For, for year 2022 that is on there.
And you, and you anticipate that, 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 that you said other private sources, foundations will, will help make up some of the funds that will be needed to support that?
That is the expectation. That's the expectation. That's what's been built into the plan. So, and the board who is here understands that the, the expectation around diversification of the funding mix over time and the plan, again, has been, you know, vetted as a part of our grant application to ensure that it complies with, with what our obligations as a city are for our, our funding that we're receiving.
And then my last question is, maybe you can help me understand this. So, so Own Rochester, does that still exist? Has that gone away? Has that been dissolved or is this affiliated with Own Rochester? Has it, is, is it has separate, you all have separate, this has separate bylaws now or is it connected or, or they're not connected at all?
Own Rochester was a DBA of nonprofit. The corporation is Rochester Market Driven Community Corporation. That corporation operated Own Rochester as a DBA, will no longer operate the operation Own Rochester as a DBA, but will, will instead operate City Sustainability as a DBA.
And this, and this Mr. Teigen person, he was affiliated with the other organization?
He was on the board, as well as Dr. Campbell was on the board. And so the, the board has elected new membership, but the, the bylaws, I mean, still the same incorporation.
Okay. All right. I'll stop there. Thank you.
President Scott, can I ask one more question?
Certainly, Councilmember Gruber.
Thanks. Commissioner Lavin Torres, I, I appreciated hearing in the presentation that there's a, a itemized budget that went through the process. I mean, that's part of what I think we were asking for prior to the, the vote. At least what I was asking for prior to the vote in, in October. Would we be able to, to see what that looks like and what the application for the ARPA committee was? I, I just, I, I, this presentation was really helpful, but I'd love to see the budget and any narrative around it too, so that we can try to understand how to evaluate this moving forward.
I will, I will consult with the Budget Director and let you know what the process is for that. Because I'm not, I'm not aware of what the process is, but we can look into that for you.
Alright, thanks.
Are there any additional questions? Comments? Okay, I think that covers the water, waterfront for us, at least for now. Commissioner, thank you so much, you and your staff and your board members. Thank you so much for the presentation. We look forward to hearing more. That we are adjourned.